All right, we should be good to go.
All right. The chair notes the time is four thirty-five. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge as ZBA chair. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Philip White.
Here.
Mr. David Slaveter.
Present.
Ms. Hilda Greenbaum. And Ms. Sarah Marshall.
Here.
The quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Rob Mora, building commissioner and Mr. Rob Wachilla, planner for the town. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty-eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty-eight, in Article ten, special permit granting authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been advertised and noticed thereof has been posted in mail to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff and may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, please provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings when the information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merit, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of hearing to file a decision. For variance, the board has one hundred days from the date of filing of the variance to file this decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period. For an agreed party to contest the decision with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda is a public hearing, ZBA FY twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. Craig and Rachel Gibson request for modification to an existing special permit, ZBA FY twenty fifteen dash zero 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 two seven under section ten point three three and three point two four one point six of the zoning bylaw to change the occupancy status of the converted dwelling from owner occupied to non-owner occupied with the resident manager, which requested waivers from traffic impact study, lighting and landscape plans at fifty McKell, Cleland Street, map eleven C, parcel one eighty-nine RG, general residence zoning district. This hearing is continued from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. After that, there's a general public comment period time for new business not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours and adjournments. The first order of business is a public hearing on ZBA FY twenty twenty-four sixteen. Rachel and Craig Gibson at fifty McLone Street, continued from April eighteenth. So we have attendees, people in attendance, all right, we have a panelist. I want to just run through quickly the submissions we've received since the last meeting. We've received an updated management plan with the resident manager's job description. We've received a standard residential, an updated or changed standard residential lease agreement. Those are the two things that have been, two documents that have been updated since the last meeting. So I guess there were a couple of questions at the last meeting that we focused on. One was a job description and the job qualifications of the resident manager. Another was the the lease itself, and the third was a lease to individuals as opposed to a group in a multi-person lease at home. So those are the three issues we dealt with, were dealing with last week and hope to have resolution of in today. And so I guess this would be the place for the Gibsons to present what they have, the response to our questions, and then the board to ask questions from that. So Mr. Gibson. Who's going to speak? Did you bring Craig in? All right, Mr. Gibson in?
Yep, I just promoted him to panelists and he should be, yep, there's his camera and his microphone.
Yeah, there we go. Hello, Mr. Gibson, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Craig Gibson at fifty McLone Street. Are you able to hear me?
Yep, loud and clear. So last week we, or last time we met, there were three items we talked about. I just, I think you just heard me go through them. Do you want to address those and any other issues that you want the board to consider tonight?
We took your considerations and worked really hard to try to get a better understanding of the resident manager and thought we had, came up with a good plan and we're going to put a resident manager in our efficiency apartment that'll run the, and and that's a, that's a must. We'll, we'll definitely comply with that and we, I think that we came up with a good plan for that.
And did you, it looks to me to be a lease that's more fulsome than the lease that you originally?
Yep, yep, we have a lease that is dedicated to the resident manager also. Yep.
Okay. All right. And then lastly, there was an issue that Ms. Greenbaum raised regarding rental to individuals rather than rental to a group. You still plan on renting to individuals in the main house for separate individuals? Have you changed that plan at all?
I don't remember that being an issue, but I, we plan to do to individuals.
Okay.
Plan.
All right.
I thought it was just the two things, yeah.
Yeah, no, I there are two things, two things you had to provide, and I think you responded to that. I think it's, it looks to me like the residential manager description and the selection criteria is an improvement over what was in contained two weeks ago. So I think you've done a good job with that. I know that Mr. Slaveter had, you raised this issue strongly. I'd like to hear your opinion and the rest of the board.
Well, the plan that you submitted is certainly an improvement. It, it commits that the resident manager will be in the, the how did you refer to that unit? I lost the word already.
Efficiency.
Efficiency, right, in the efficiency unit. The, the process that you described with references, with advertising clearly, the amount of discount is not relevant to me, but clearly there will, there is some sort of implied compensation for this position. So the person is committing to do something for you. So I think you've addressed most of the concerns. I, I still have a couple of, they may be more questions than anything. Is it possible, and I guess I'm asking Mr. Wachilla or Mr. Mora more than anyone. Is it possible to stipulate that the resident manager does not have a, a social or any other kind of connection to the residents of the main unit? I mean, I wouldn't want the fifth pal to be the manager. Then there would be less, there might be more reluctance to insist on certain behavior. I don't know if that's possible, but it occurred to me.
Mr. Mora.
That sounds really difficult to be on top of and even aware of. I, I think if, you know, there could be an obvious situation if all five tenants were, you know, part of an athletic team or some club, it might be obvious, but I think writing that into the lease is going to be very difficult to see anybody either enforce or apply or maybe even be interested in.
That, that's actually the answer I expected. I was, I just wanted to ask it and be a little hopeful. The other thing.
One other thing, Dave, one, one other thing. Once they're in there, the five individuals are residing there, there's going to become, they potentially could become friends, at least they'll, more than acquaintances. And so I wouldn't want to disqualify somebody because they've made friends with the people next door.
No, and we can't, I guess we can't stipulate that the resident manager has to be the most unpleasant person that they can possibly find.
There is quite a separation from in the group, in the entrances, and they're not sharing bathrooms or or even entrances.
Right, no, I, I understand. So I, I think you've come up with a credible approach to finding an independent qualified resident manager. More than anything, I was looking for qualified. I have one question, as long as I'm speaking about the lease. If you're, if you are renting to four individuals as opposed to four people all on one lease, they are not collectively responsible. It seems. They are individually responsible. So is there any? Does it work better if they are all on one lease? And then if there's a violation, they are all somehow responsible and and they're responsible for fixing the situation as opposed to blaming one person? I'm trying to anticipate while we still have any possibility of influencing something.
Is that to me?
Anybody, I don't care. And it, well, I guess it's also to Mr. Mora. Maybe.
Mr. Mora? Or Mr., yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested in the owner or manager's response to this because ultimately if there's a violation that's being enforced, you know, the town will cite the owner of the property. So whatever lease agreement or language is in place between the landlord or the owner and the tenant is going to be important for their ability to either, you know, pass on fines or gain compliance to whatever mechanisms are available. So I, I guess I'll end with, you know, it's not uncommon to have, you know, rental by the room or to the individual. Multiple leases is a pretty common thing, but I've never, you know, had to deal with the owners trying to get, get the responsible party to, you know, be, be responsible for whatever issue has come up. It collectively has always worked out one way or the other from our view.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, my concerns are pretty much answered. So I'm all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaveter. Ms. Marshall.
Yes, this is the, the plan for the resident manager is a great improvement. So I really just have one question about the lease. This is the lease for both the tenants in the four-bedroom part of the structure and for the resident manager?
Resident manager has its own dedicated lease with a lot more, I, I included that. It has a lot more information about what the job title is, what the, and what entails, and, and it's also part of the when we advertise it, what the management, what the resident manager needs to.
Right, my, my question, so then where's the other lease?
We just got one lease, I think, in our packets. And I looked online, we just had the one. It said lease that's tenant slash resident manager. That's that.
That's what I'm asking, so.
Oh, sorry.
Everybody else.
The tenant has the same one except for the resident manager sections taken out.
Cross that off. Okay. Thank you.
Which is from the Amherst website too.
Right.
Standard.
And Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gibson, thank you for coming back with the information we were requesting. My question is more for Mr. Mora. With regards to the last meeting, I know Ms. Greenbaum had some questions about the kind of legality of the independent leases. Since we do have Mr. Mora on the call, I wonder if he'd be able to speak just for the record that there's going to be no legal issue with having individual leases. I mean, I don't suspect there will, since you just said they're very common in the town of Amherst, but just for clarity's sake, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mora.
Sure, and I wasn't at the prior meeting, but I did hear from Mr. Wachilla a little bit about the issues that Ms. Greenbaum raised. And I believe she was referring to the lodging and boarding regulations in Article five of our zoning bylaw and concern that there, there may not be the ability to offer rooms or individuals leases beyond a certain number because of the cap that's specified in Article five, which is three unrelated individuals. Why that doesn't apply is that it's, that's an accessory use to a principal use of a property, which would be an owner occupied dwelling. And those provisions would apply if, you know, if, if Mr. Gibson was staying in the home and renting out three rooms, the limit would be three individual leases. But that entire section has, has no applicability because the principal use is now changing from that owner occupied dwelling to the non-owner occupied converted dwelling. And Article five just doesn't apply in that case. So, and that's the only instance where there would be a limit on the number of individual leases unless it was a condition of a special permit.
Okay. Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, the question, just so I understand what Rob Mora, understand that regulation, regulation, does that mean that if if the property owner were to live in the efficiency apartment, he could not rent out the main house to four people?
I, I don't think so.
No, so there, there's two dwelling units on the property. So by definition, there are two individual dwelling units. The zoning bylaw, how it applies, maximum number of units or individuals in each unit is four. That would be the case no matter what. If the owner was living in one of the units, Mr. Gibson could rent three rooms in, in his unit in addition to the rental of the other unit to four separate individuals.
Well, one of them is a studio, so there's one person.
Sure, so I guess in the example of two equal multiple bedroom units where it would work, the way the bylaw, what the bylaw allows is that the owner occupied unit, dwelling unit could have accessory lodging and boarding up to three individuals or three rooms. So it just doesn't fit here in this case.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Wachilla.
I just want to say that in regards to the lease, that's only going to be used for the tenants that was included in a previous meeting packet. So we do have on our permit file for this case a copy of the regular lease and a copy of the lease with the resident manager attached to it. Just want to provide the information to the board. Thank you.
Great.
But I think we thought that first lease was we recommended the owner use a more detailed one. So I was assuming that this lease now is replacing the earlier one.
And that's, yeah, that's what I thought Mr. Gibson said is that it wouldn't have for the regular, it wouldn't have section, it looks like section twenty-eight, resident manager wouldn't be included in the other, the lease with the other four individuals, that provision. Is that right? You'd use the same lease except you'd cross out the resident manager provision? Mr. Gibson?
Yep.
Okay, so this lease that you submitted to us is the current lease that you intend to use for the four individuals at, just by excising the resident manager description job.
Correct, that was advised by the town management people. That was sufficient.
Got it. Okay, that clarifies it. That clarify it for you, Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Anything else that you wish to present, Mr. Gibson?
No, I, I got, no.
All right, all right.
I wish my wife could be here. She's, she's teaching right now and I'm late for my, another commitment myself, so. But this is important, so I need to get this done.
Okay. Next, if there's no further questions, we have time for public comments. I noticed there's six, five attendees.
Yep, five attendees.
If people, the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by raising their hand. And then when called upon, please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments for about three minutes. I'll start a clock just to help you stay at that. So it looks like the first hand up is Ms. Joan Omira.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, hi everyone. So.
Well, just goes here.
Joan Omira, thirty-seven Cosby Avenue, Amherst, Mass. Is that sufficient?
Yep, that's good.
Hi. So I'm a little puzzled, truthfully, philosophically, why the town even bothers to do owner occupied zoning board meetings when we continue to change owner occupied status, meaning what is the point of owner occupation? When someone decides to move on from their property and convert it to non-owner occupied? How, I don't know philosophically how the town has a rationale for changing it to a non-owner occupied residency. Philosophically. I know the property owner has a right to do what they want, but the impact on the rest of the community is significant. As you well know, and that's why they're moving. Because they didn't want to be near students.
No, that's not the reason.
Well, you have every reason. You're right. You're right, so I don't want to argue that point. But I, we just went through this process a few weeks ago that we are required to be owner occupied residents because we have an accessible dwelling unit. And we're happy to do that. We're happy to be owner occupied. But where, where is the logic to continue to change this? Capitalism. I don't know if anyone wants to answer that question.
You know, the, the board or the participant can respond after all the public comments if they choose. Yep.
That's all I have to say. Thank you, thank you all.
Thanks, Ms. Omira. Thanks, Joan. Are there any other people who wish to comment?
Not seeing any hands up, Mr. Chair. Oh, John Rosenthal just raised his hand.
Mr. Rosenthal, just give us your name and address for the record.
On mute here. Can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Yeah, my name is John Rosenthal. I live at fifty-one McLone Street, directly across from fifty McLone Street. When I heard that this issue was coming up, I went over and I spoke to Craig and he told me essentially why he was moving and what his long-term intentions were for this particular property, which I gather is to keep it in the family. Is that correct, Craig? And so he has been a, a, a very good neighbor and I am sure that he is going to require that this is a well-run household. And I can only say that because I have known Craig for several years now, and that's what I expect him to do to, to keep this as a, a neighborhood a plus. Okay, that's all I want to say, and I'm, I'm in support of this particular application and, and I hope that you will vote it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Other public comments?
Not seeing any hands up, Mr. Chair.
Nope. All right, Mr. Gibson, you can respond to the public comment if you wish.
John, I still plan to get the snow off your driveway. I'm going to miss you. And I'll be around, I'll be at the brunches.
All right. Is there any board comments? Ms. Marshall.
I, I would say that I view my role as applying the zoning bylaw, but I don't write it. So I can't speak to why it has been designed the way it is, but we, or I at least, but I think all of us are certainly trying to make sure that you know, a project is thoroughly vetted and the neighborhood is protected as best we can within the the powers given to us by the bylaw.
Mr. Slaveter.
This is just a, a comment expressing how I view this in general. I think that Mr. Gibson has complied with everything that was requested of him and that he is making a good faith effort to make this property not an objectionable one. I have a basic ongoing concern about changing owner occupied to non-owner occupied. I sympathize with Ms. Omira and her comments. I feel this way because of the proven data that non-owner occupied properties become are more likely to be problems. And also because I live across the street from a non-owner occupied property, where the tenants, in spite of the fact that they have a lovely backyard, believe that barbecues, beer pong, and late night loud discussions are best done in the front and on the front porch. So I have an inherent skepticism and uncomfortable feeling. This property is on the line between one half of the block that has a lot of student rentals and the other half of the block that has very few. And I don't, I'm not entirely comfortable with this creeping down and changing the neighborhood. But I didn't hear a lot of neighborhood opposition, which I was waiting for if that would show up. And I also believe that what Ms. Marshall said about, we are here to interpret the rules, we don't make the rules, we, we comply unless there is a really compelling reason not to. So I just wanted to express my, I'm, I'm going to support this because I think Mr. Gibson has has comported himself well and is, is doing the best he can. I'm sorry that he's leaving the neighborhood and changing the status of the unit. And I can only hope that moving forward, the resident manager is heavily vetted and very responsible and is a real annoyance to anybody in the main property that does not behave. So thank you for at least letting me express that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just have one comment, and I think Ms. Omira, Joan really raises a problem that we've all faced, which is, we have to, the fundamental decision is, is this going to be detriment to the neighborhood? And that's really what requires, you know, the judgment that we have to make. It's clearly allowed by the zoning bylaw. It's clearly allowed by the zoning bylaw. And we have the, we have the discretion to think to say that this is going to be uh, the plan before us, the special permit before us, will, will, will be, will work to the detriment of the neighborhood. Become an annoyance, all the kinds of things we have to find under ten point three eight. And I think in this case, for a multitude of reasons, one of which Mr. Sloviter has just mentioned being that this is the first, this will just add on to the entire student rental property on the up to his property. It's already there, so I don't, and then the rest of the neighborhood, rest of the block is pretty much owner occupied. I don't think it's going to be a dramatic change in the quality or the character of the neighborhood, and I don't see that that in and of itself will work to the detriment of the neighborhood. Especially since I think we have a good resident manager provision that we don't always see. And I think Ms. Marshall is also right. Uh, we are given, we are given the zoning bylaw to interpret. We are given discretion. We have to make certain findings under ten point three eight. And if we can't make those findings, we don't approve the we don't approve the, the special permit application for a non-owner occupied property, and that's happened at times, uh, by the zoning board. And so this was one where I think we just looked at, I'm, I'm looking at it and saying I think that this is one where the, I think the neighborhood will not be will not be impacted adversely by this change. Um, and and I think it's permitted, and I know it's permitted under the zoning bylaw, so this seems to me to be one where our judgment is that this makes sense and the owner, um, has given provided evidence of very, um, willingness to manage this property so that it doesn't, uh, affect the neighborhood and his uh, long-term residence in that neighborhood, even as a that it be his childhood residence, um, seems to indicate even more so that. So it's not something I'm comfortable with all the time, and I think there's a real problem in town with student rentals creeping. I don't see that this is that. And, uh, so I it's a judgment call in this case, and I'm willing to make the judgment call on the half of the applicants as I see it in this case. All right. There's any other comments? This would be the time to have them. Mr. Gibson, if there's anything you wish to say? If not, I'd like to, if not, I'd like to move. Um, I would entertain a motion that we move out of the public hearing into a public meeting while keeping the public meeting open to consider, um, our deliberation on this application. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, the chair votes aye. Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Mr. Sloviter? Aye.
Mr. White?
It's aye.
It's Amherst.
It's Amherst, yeah.
You can assign anything you want. It doesn't matter.
All right, the motion is four to nothing. Uh, it passes. We're now in a public meeting. Um, typically, that's not where we get public comment. It's where we, the board deliberates and where we can consider, um, our findings and the conditions. I have no, I think I stated my intention and my general feelings. I don't know if anybody else feels the need to speak before we go into conditions and into findings. If not, um, let's take a look at the conditions contained in the, um, proposed the draft, uh, project analysis, project report, uh, conditions one through twelve. First one is pretty much boilerplate. You gotta, you gotta build it or, um, use it as contained in the, in the submissions. The second, um, uh, is it, yeah, in case of a sale, the new owner has to come to the zoning board of appeals uh, to, to go over the management plan. Uh, number three deals with the resident manager. Um, and the addition here is the state of the management plan. The resident manager shall reside in the studio apartment and will have a lease agreement that is separate from tenants who are not resident managers. Four, there's no more than four unrelated adults. Number five is no more than one adult should live in the studio apartment. Six, all exterior lighting shall be designed and installed to be downcast and, um, abide by ZDA rules. Seven, street numbers for the dwellings should be clearly marked. Eight, parking shall occur on improved surfaces only. Um, and the parking areas shall be constructed in accordance with requirements of Article seven. There should be no more than four cars parked on the property on a regular basis. The trash receptacles shall be screened. The property shall register with the rental registration program. And upon the renewal, again, this is, uh, these last two are pretty much boilerplate. Upon the annual renewal of Amherst residential rental registration, the applicant shall submit to the building commissioner an up-to-date complaint violation log with the Amherst Inspection Services documenting filed complaints, violations, as well as actions taken as defined under this condition in condition two. So are there any questions regarding the conditions, any additions, modifications, or amendments suggested? Mr. White?
Uh, Mr. Chair, on number eight, and this might just me be, might be me being an idiot. Um, where it says parking shall occur on improved surfaces only, should that be approved? Or improved?
Improved is a
Because it's reading improved.
Yeah, improved is a defined term that means
Oh, okay.
It's not just, um, it's not just asphalt. It's gravel and, um, it's, it's delineated in the zoning bylaw, learning improved surfaces. Mr. Marshall can speak to that more precisely, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's mainly that you're not on grass, so it's been improved to some sort of a standard to be used for what its intended purpose is, parking vehicles.
Grass from mud. To elaborate further, too, yeah, because grass turns in the mud when you park on it after a while.
Yep. Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I don't know if it need be said here or in the lease, or maybe it's part of the rental registration program, but I would think that the resident manager, that contact information for the resident manager needs to be posted or given or something to the, for potentially for people in the other unit. Right? Because they, they need to contact that person if there's plumbing issue, yeah? Or they just contacting the owner.
So I mean, condition three kind of is responsible for anything dealing with the resident manager. I mean, do you want to just add that to that condition, Sarah? Do you think that would make the most sense?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess the, um, tenants of the other unit must have contact info for the resident manager at all times. Okay.
They should, yeah, they shall receive information, contact information. Yeah.
I conclude that.
All right. Any other comments, amendments, concerns on the conditions? If not, I would, um, entertain a motion that we approve the conditions and block as amended by Ms. Marshall's amendment.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The vote occurs on the motion to, uh, approve the conditions as amended. Chair votes aye. Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Vote is four to nothing with one absent. The, uh, conditions are approved. Now we have to make findings under two sections.
I'll screen share momentarily. I apologize for the delay in that.
The first is under Article three dealing with converted dwellings. And we have to find that this is a converted dwelling that complies with section three point three two four one point six, which states that a proposed conversion shall be suitably located in the neighborhood and an area close to heavily traveled streets, close to businesses, commercial, educational districts, blah, blah, blah. And shall require either owner occupancy or resident manager. And, you know, I think we can find that the McClellan Street is heavily trafficked and is adjacent to the Amherst downtown and that the resident manager will be, uh, there will be a resident manager of the property. So I think, uh, that's the first finding. Second findings, and I'll read these all in block and then we can discuss them if we, if we need to. Uh, ten point three eight and three eight zero and three eight one, the proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood, which is posed and is compatible with existing uses. I think you can find that's the residential district. Ten point three eight two, three eight three, three eight five, and three eight seven aren't really applicable. They deal with, um, constituting a nuisance, whether the use would constitute a nuisance, would be substantially inconvenient or hazardous to the butters, would be, um, adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive uses, would provide, would not provide convenient, safe or vehicular traffic. Um, none of the, there's no changes in the, um, the structure or the use of this, um, property that would implicate that, and I think therefore those are not applicable to this find this, um, application. Ten point three eight four deals with adequate and appropriate facilities provided for proper operation. It's there on site. Um, it's got town sewer and everything else, so appropriate facilities are there. Ten point three eight six, proposal ensures that it's in accordance with parking and sign regulations. Uh, it does conform with seven, with Article seven and eight of the zoning bylaw. Ten point three eight seven was contained up in the, uh, earlier non-applicable, um, finding. Uh, ten point three eight eight also is not applicable. That deals with adequate space for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Ten point three nine, um, ten point three eight nine, adequate methods of disposal or storage for sewage refuge. Uh, they will have trash services, uh, available and for, and trash storage will be shielded and picked up weekly. Ten point three nine zero deals with, uh, flood hazards. That's not applicable. Ten point three nine one deals with, um, protecting existing feasible, unique or, um, to extent feasible, unique or important natural, historic or scenic features. Um, I mean, there's no modifications to the existing building, so it doesn't, um, implicate that at all. Ten point three nine two provides adequate landscaping, screening of adjacent residential uses and provision of street trees, et cetera. Uh, there's no changes from current use, so the finding is clear there. They can find it. It doesn't provide, it does provide adequate landscaping. Ten point three nine three, the proposed provides protection of adjacent property from light intrusion. Uh, there's no changing in the lighting plan and all, in all lights comply with exist with the ZDA rules and regulations. Ten point three nine four deals with steep slopes. We don't have steep slopes, so that's not applicable. Ten point three nine five deals with disharmony with respect to the terrain, use scale and architecture of the existing buildings in the vicinity. There's no exterior changes, so that's not applicable. Ten point three nine six deals with screening of storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters, rooftop equipment. To the extent this is applicable, it deals with trash receptacles which are located uh, and are shielded from the public right away. Ten point three nine seven, um, again, deals with recreational facilities. There's no change in existing use and existing special permit. And ten point three nine eight, the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and the goals of the master plan. This, I, this is in harmony with the goal to provide more housing in Amherst. Um, so given those items, are there anybody, is there anybody that has a question about any of those findings? All right. I would entertain a motion that we make the findings required under section three point three two four one six and under ten point three eight um, through ten points appropriately through ten point three nine eight. Do I have such a motion?
I'm on.
Ms. Marshall moves. Is there a second? Mr. Sloviter seconds?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to make the findings?
Can have it.
If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the findings. Um, the chair votes aye. Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
The vote is four to nothing to, with one absent. The motion carries. The last order of business is the motion to, uh, approve the special permit application. Uh, ZDA, excuse me, I want to get this right. ZDA two thousand fifteen, no, that's the old one. ZDA.
It's a FY twenty twenty four.
Twenty four dash, dash sixteen.
Yes, dash sixteen.
Dash sixteen. Um, with conditions and to close a public hearing on such special permit application. Do I have such a motion? Do we have to, do we, we don't have to do anything to the old special permit, right? This is just that that continues on, or does it, does that have to extinguish, Rob? I guess.
So it's an amendment to the previous permit. Uh, Rob Mora, correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't extinguish it, but it just modifies it. Is that correct?
That, that's the language in the
Yeah.
That's correct. You're modifying the prior special permit, so they both have a fact.
Yep, they both have, right, good. All right, so the motion is to approve the special permit uh, with conditions and to close a public hearing on this matter. Do I have such a motion? Move, Ms. Marshall moves. Is there a second?
Phil should get this one. He's
Yeah, we ought to get Philip in one, but I think.
Second.
We don't want to lose him. Oh, I hear him. All right, we got, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Um, the vote occurs on the motion. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
The vote is four to nothing, uh, with one absent. Four votes are required to approve a special permit. The special permit is approved. And the hearing, and the spec, the public hearing is closed. All right, Mr. Gibson? Good luck.
Mr. Chair, did you want me to quickly go over next steps with Mr. Gibson so he's aware of the process?
You know, you can, you can give him a call. Um, I know he's got to run. He, he's been saying that, uh, he's got another meeting, so.
Sure, I'll follow up with you tomorrow, Craig, and we can talk about the process after the fact.
All right.
Take care.
The next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. And I think we have a, we have a public commenter. Rob, Mr. Ken Rosenthal.
We have one hand raised, Ken Rosenthal, and he will be given speaking privileges.
There we go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Uh, I'm Ken Rosenthal, fifty three Sunset Avenue. My question, I have a question about a previous matter. Uh, several weeks ago, you were considering a matter in South Amherst on land owned by Hampshire College, presented to you by Archipelago for a, uh, for you to, uh, approve ten percent of, uh, commercial space on the main floor rather than thirty percent, and you approved, you did not approve the ten percent. Is that decision final? Is it final and has it been filed? If it's been filed, has it been appealed or has the time for appeal run out? Could you, in other words, just give me the status of where that is, if you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Um, typically, we, this is just public comment and not questions of the board, but, um, I think we can ask, this is a matter of public records and public documents. So, um, Rob, can you give us the status of that?
Yeah, sure. So that was denied by the board
Yep.
uh, at that meeting, and the twenty day appeal period had passed. The abutters of that property were notified of the decision of the board and instructions on how to appeal. We never received an appeal from the applicant or the affected neighbors or residents in town. So therefore, uh, the applicant has to wait two years before they can apply for a special permit on that particular property. So that's the status right now, and, um, the appeal period had closed, uh, I think it was a month ago.
Thank you very much for the information.
Yep.
Okay. No other request to speak to the panel that I see? All right. Uh, Rob, uh, what's, next order of business is old business and matters that have not come before, not anticipated in the last forty eight hours. Is there, um, anything, you've got, um, a meeting in a week and a half. We've got a meeting on, uh, two items. What do we have after that? What are the two items we have in? In next week, next week, it is, yes?
So next Thursday, we have two hearings. The first is for a flag lot, forty seven Red Gate Lane. Build a single family home and to approve the flag lot. Um, and then we have one eighty North Whitney Street, which is to turn a single-family structure into a two-family, non-owner occupied duplex. Um, David's gonna love that one. Uh, and, um, on May twenty third, which is the meeting after the ninth, uh, we have two hearings that are filed, but one that could be filed after the fact. Um, so the two that are filed, the first one's for ninety eight Fearing Street, which is a property that has an existing, uh, three-family apartment. which is a property that has an existing, uh, three-family apartment structure. They're trying to put a second three, uh, units apartment building on the same sites. Um, so essentially they're gonna have two apartment buildings, but they're proposing to add a second to one that's already there. Um, and ten bedrooms in total for that building. And then the other petition is, um, three ninety-five West Street, which is the Amherst Office Park location. They're gonna put a mixed-use building on sites with nine units and two commercial spaces. As of right now, Mr. Chair, that's all we have. Uh, nothing about the forty B, um, filing either.
All right. And you're looking for people to get back to you about their availability for the next meeting next Thursday, correct?
That's correct. And I know, uh, David was the only person so far. He said he was available. Uh, Phillip is gonna be traveling for May. Um, so he's unavailable. Craig Meadows is unavailable and Everett is unavailable. So most of our full members, uh, aren't available. Steve, are you available for May ninth meeting?
That's gonna be really hard for me to be available for the May ninth meeting.
All right. So the only full member who'll be available is Mr. Slovater. Yeah. Which means that we're gonna have to find associates who are gonna have to fill in and Ms. Marshall, I don't know if you're available for May ninth. Um, I, it perceive those hearings not taking more than one meeting. Um, if you're not available, that's totally fine. I figured I'd ask since I have you here.
Um, I, I'll need to check something out.
That's fine. Um, so I have to, so that means we're gonna have to rely on three associates, two of them who are new members to the ZBA to, to, to be the panelists for that one. The David will have to most likely chair, um, if Steve is unavailable. So there's a lot to discuss and that'll also be my last zoning board meeting as the staff leaves on. So a fun way to, to send off, uh, myself.
Then all those nice things that Mr. Slovater had been saying about you, you can take back.
Officially, I'll be filing, I'll be filing a complaint with the ZBA, that's for sure. Is, um, as long as we're on this with only one full member and the really experienced, really dignified chair not available, do we have to have a meeting?
Not necessarily. I mean, we could ask the applicants if they'd be willing to continue to like the first June meeting, um, just so Steve can be available. Um, we don't have anything scheduled yet for that meeting. Uh, I believe it's June, June thirteenth.
It's the first Jim meeting. June, June sixth is, uh, the first meeting in June and the solar is scheduled for that day. I have.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's, um, that's an off-meeting, um, sorry, off-scheduled meeting date. But Steve, you said you weren't available on June thirteenth, right?
June thirteenth. Let me just look at my schedule here real quickly.
Yeah, sure. And we could also, um,
I'm sorry, what about May twenty-third?
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third is scheduled.
So we have two hearings already, um, anticipated to be scheduled for that date. So unless the board wants to hear four petitions in the same night, that's, that seems like a lot. Yeah. Um.
June sixth, I have, um, nothing, I'm, I'm scheduled, I'm, we've got the solar update, which should be quick on June sixth.
So June sixth could be a potential date to continue it to, Mr. Chair. I think that would be the most appropriate. Um, and of course I'll talk with Chris Brush up because she'll probably be taking over for me and I'll discuss that uh, situation with her. But Steve, um, we could do a panel where it's just the associates, Mr. Slovater, and then yourself as the chair.
I mean, I'll be back then too.
I'm sure, yeah, Phillip will be back as well.
Yeah. And I think, uh, I think we have a full panel for June sixth, because we went through the, if you wanna do, if you wanna do June sixth, cause I think solar would be quick. We wanna take these other two, may perhaps, quick applications. June sixth may be the time to do that because we would, I know that we have a full panel. Uh, I think everybody said they were available on June sixth for the solar, of the solar.
So the only thing is, uh, three of you would have to be available for the May twenty-third. Oh, sorry, the May ninth meeting in order to continue those hearings to June sixth. So they've been advertised. Yeah.
Chair, just, can't, can't you just have the chair just?
You have to have a quorum. So in order to have the meeting, you need the three voting members for that special permit there, um, to vote to continue and that's it. And then here is petitions at the, when they get moved to June sixth. That's kind of where the dilemma comes in. So unless
Could we vote now?
No, you have to wait until May ninth.
We have to wait, okay.
Not on the agenda.
Yeah. And again, I noticed.
Well, uh, if it, if it helps, I, I think it should be continued because rather than give, than these applicants not having as complete and fair a hearing as possible.
Yeah.
I'm probably, I'm not as afraid of being the chair that night as I probably should be. But, uh, I would, I, I would rather it be more properly done. I am not, however, afraid to be the chair if there's three people and all we're doing is continuing. In which case, then I can, I can read whatever I'm supposed to read and, and entertain a motion.
I can, I mean, I could ask the other panelists for the Suits Berry Road solar. Um, and if they could step in for like twenty minutes or so, just really quick, so we can vote to continue it and go from there. But I, you know, I, I could call around tomorrow and ask if they'd be willing to do it for a few minutes. I could ask Everett. Um, Craig, I think is unavailable. He's out of the country. So he goes out of the country a lot. Um, but yeah, I, I'll see what I can do. I mean, we'll, we'll make it work, Mr. Chair. Uh, worst case scenario, we could have one full member present and then have one of the associates step in. So like if Hilda was available and
Yeah.
Have her in the panel for June sixth and just go from there. I, I know it makes it very complicated, but we, we have a lot of these petitions coming in and people are, you know, limited availability. It's just how it is.
Yeah. So what, what you're gonna try to, to sum it up, you're gonna try to get three mem, three members for, continue this to, to the sixth. We have a full panel on the sixth already because of, oh, the solar, we only have four people on the solar panel. So we need one additional person to be a panel for the two, um, additional, um, applications that we're continuing to the sixth, right? Yep.
Yeah. So we have four people for that panel.
Yeah, we just need one more.
We say one more. Um, well, yeah, also depend on who can make it from that panel to May ninth to vote to continue the hearing. So in order to vote to continue the hearing, you need at least three panelists from wherever panel's gonna vote on that special permit. So I know that makes it complicated, but I'll figure it out. I always have a way of making these things work out somehow.
We will. It'll be done. All right. Let's work that out.
All righty.
Okay. Any other questions about, um, upcoming items on the agenda, the schedule, or anything else? All right. Rob, you'll have one more meeting before you go. Thank you for
Barely.
If I'm not, and I won't be on it, I don't think. So, um, I want to thank you for all your efforts publicly for, uh, helping us. You've got a lot of work that we've done and you're a big part of why we're successful. So thank you so much. And congratulations on a great, it looks like a great move for you and, um, East Long Meadows, is it East Long Meadow? East Long Meadows gain is our loss. Um, we hate to see you go, but good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I've had a good time working with this board. David, I think I'll miss you most of all, even though you took your kind words back. You, you remind me so much of the Mid-Atlantic area where I grew up. I, I'm from Delaware, so not too far from Philly.
Right. And I, I will be at the meeting on, uh, on the sixth. And if I'm the only full member, I'll chair it and I will be appropriately contemptuous and disdainful of you at your last meeting. Thank you, Phillip. Solidarity, brother.
Yeah. We're gonna hear real Philadelphia talk. That's, I can hear it.
Yeah, you're in trouble now.
Still don't know where his favorite hoagie place is, but that's okay. Talk about that later.
I nearly get to food. I knew it.
It's dinner time. I'm hungry. That just makes me wanna eat. All right. If there's nothing else, um, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
So, second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Motion is not debatable. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Vote's four to nothing. Um, motion carries. We are adjourned.